Always have to look at my calendar. September meeting of the City Council of Waynesville. And we're thrilled that you're here tonight. It's exciting to see all the Boy Scouts here and we'll talk about them in just a moment. Before we get started, I'd like to say thank you again to Mr. Wallace and his crew from WCC and all they do for us. Tonight he has Haley, I believe that's Alicia, is that correct? Alicia or Alice? Alisia. I can't hear you. Alicia, I apologize. I will talk to you and we'll get to know that name better. Lily, Jason, and Mr. Garrett that I met, by the way, at our lift sink challenge. And I believe Ed Conley was there with me, I believe he was the only councilman that showed up. But we were rocking it, weren't we Garrett?
Oh yeah.
And so the lift sink challenge finally took place. We probably had, I did not see you there. Were you there? We were at the Little Heroes Playground honoring our local heroes. And Garrett and his, Ms. Kristic, is it Grace?
Yeah.
Grace is going to turn that into something I think that we'll have a lot of fun with. And appreciate all the people that showed up for that and I appreciate you guys very much so. So I call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Hardman.
Here.
Councilwoman Foulker, here. Councilwoman Davis. Councilwoman Clark.
Here.
Councilwoman Curtis.
Here.
Councilwoman Brown. Councilwoman Liberty.
Here.
Councilwoman Conley. Councilwoman France.
Here.
Very good, we do have a quorum tonight, a couple of our councilpeople were out of town. Would you join me with Reverend Shawn Wilson giving the invocation and would you remain standing? Is there a Boy Scout who would like to step up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? How about your oldest scout? Step on up, step on up, okay? Preacher.
Please pray. Tell me Father, Father, we thank you for just another day. We ask that you just bless this meeting, bless all of the leaders. We ask that you just impart us with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to govern this city, the way that it needs to be led and governed. Father, we ask you right now, Lord, to just continue to keep us and we want to pray for all those that were affected by the floods on the east coast. We pray for peace and our safety and recovery. In your name we pray.
Amen.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Young man, would you step over and tell the clerk your name so she can put your name in the minutes? And guys, we are thrilled to have the Scouts with us tonight. And I believe this is PAC 202.
Yes.
Yes. And of course Tia is an old student of mine, so that's kind of exciting. And glad to have all of you here. And I believe when the meeting is over tonight, the mayor is going to stay with you guys and talk to you a little bit. So you can kind of pay attention to how we do things and how local government works. And I think this might be a good lesson for you tonight. So we're glad to have you here. So we'll begin our meeting. First item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt normal business.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second by Cheryl and all those in favor. That's unanimous. And then we have special comments tonight. And the first thing I would ask maybe is, Tia, would you want to stand up and say something about why your group is here tonight? And you may do it right there.
Okay. My name is Tia Scholes. And we are with PAC and TRIP 202. They're both are working on rights advancements as well as citizenship in the community. And they are leading to talk to community leaders and issues facing our community.
Very good. And I might even ask the City Council if, when it's over, if there's anybody in the City Council that would like to stay? And I'll address them just a little bit and maybe you guys could add something too. I talked with you earlier, maybe last week, and I expected maybe six people. So how exciting to see our whole chamber full of Boy Scouts. Thank you so much for being here, thank you parents for being here. I was a Scout parent, very proud of that. And Mr. France, very involved in scouting.
I was used to be the 202 troop leader.
Yeah. So we love our Scouts and of course love all that you do for our community. I also had on our agenda our Presiding Commissioner Gene Newkirk, and I do not see him in the crowd. So I'm disappointed that Gene didn't make it, I hope nothing is wrong. Mr. Newkirk was going to be here to discuss the new jail. And I believe they opened the bids this week on the jail. I believe I heard him speak recently and it was like a 14 to 15 million dollar project. And so hopefully that is going to be done by next spring, I believe is what they're shooting for. No pun intended. And then this is the time for citizens' comments, and I know that my friend Scott Turner is here and wants to address the City Council. Council, come on up to the podium. Council, you would know Mr. Turner ran an Indian artifact and other things down in Westside. He had a little store there next to the Westside Cafe, and that's where I met you. Very good, glad to have you Scott, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Scott Turner. I've been a square dancer for three and a half years. And I've gone through ballroom dancing. I've taken lessons in Springfield, going back and forth. Was introduced into USA Dance Association. They promote ballroom dancing. And they also deal with dance sport in the youth into the sport of dancing. They can have a committee in the US Olympics. And they're currently at the team. And get it all paid through the US Olympics. If we get enough support, we'll bring the kids into it and have programs. They do have programs for the kids. And they'll pick the talent ones and stuff, if they're interested in competition. They'll let you go to Kansas City, or they'll go all the way, all the way to bring competitions here. We also deal with the K all the way up to senior and citizen.
Very good, that's me.
Me too. (Laughter).
Now are you a square dancer Scott?
Yes, I dance about three times, four times a month.
That's a, that's fun.
And we're currently covering the area from Rollup to Lebanon and between. We're starting our first dance in October 19th.
Okay.
In St. Robert Community Center.
Okay.
And that's from 7 to 10:45. The first part of it, we try to go over a little bit of dance death like the Waltz or whatever.
Okay.
And once we're certified, once we get 25 people to help us, members, they will be processed to be certified.
Very good.
And then from there, we can bring people in from Springfield, New York County, do workshops and give lessons. So.
This is a, this is a fun thing for our community. And can I tell you that I do believe there's some demand for this at Fort Leonard Wood? I have, a lot of my Army friends will say, where can I go for ballroom dancing? And I believe, maybe two years ago, we had a ballroom class here. And it was very, very popular. And in fact, it was when General Smith was here. General Smith and his wife.
We had a caller that came in from Springfield every week, where my wife and I participated in. We did the Waltz, we did.
Cha-cha.
The cha-cha.
Oh, we're so cultured.
But it was, we had a good time. We had, I think it was three sessions with about, we had about 10, 12 couples.
We are so cultured here, aren't we? And can I, can I interrupt one more time and tell you that our attorney is a ballroom dancer?
That's true, I've met her.
I'm telling you, I enjoyed that. They did a fundraiser at the lake one time and invited me over. And Ralph and his wife are very accomplished dancers. So this is a great thing for our community. And I'm going to ask our City Clerk to post this for you here at City Hall. And if I were you, I'd get ahold of Gary Canance at the radio station and, and he's real big on these PSAs and that might help you also.
Yeah, we're currently getting kids involved, maybe, there's a lot of drugs and stuff like that, maybe get them away from that.
Sure.
From another avenue.
Give it all something to do.
And soldiers, there's studies that say that helps them with PTSD.
Very good. Okay, well, we appreciate you being here. And you know what else? It's good to see you.
Good to see you, thank you.
You are welcome.
Sir, do you know Randy Yocum?
I've heard of him.
He dances in Springfield every week, him and his wife. And they're the ones that got this thing here through the YMCA is where we did it.
Oh, the class.
So I would say try and get hold of Randy Yocum, he lives right down near the funeral home. But him and his wife are really big into it. And then they also did something in Rollup on a recurring basis.
Very good. Well, thank you Scott, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the City Council? This would be. Very good, moving on. We have our Board of Commissions, liaison reports, and Shawn Wilson is our Park Board Chairman. And Shawn is here, I believe he's got Lawrence Beamer, Larry, he's got Amanda Caring with him, I believe it's just those two are members. And so Shawn, I've been sitting up here listening to all the compliments on your last meeting, so tell us about it.
It was pretty boring, no.[664.32][664.32](Laughter). We, it was, we had a few board members missing, but it didn't stop what we had planned going on. We had 24, 24 adults show up.
Wow.
15 children, and we had two dogs there. But we, everybody was very happy. And for those that are not aware, what we have been doing is having our park board meetings because the city of Waynesville has six parks. And instead of having our meetings here, we actually go to each park and have our monthly meetings. And this last month, we had our park, our meeting at the Summit Park. And Mr. Beamer did outstanding job prepping that community because each, each board member has a different park they're responsible for. And he spread the word. It was a great turnout, we got great feedback. And also confirmed what we were going to be doing this next upcoming year based on our proposals with the increase in the budget to meet the needs of that particular community. And that was the toddler type park equipment that they brought up. And everything that we talked about, actually really connected with what they wanted to do, so we were all in the same team of music and performing. Money we use, what we, we don't have to sit back and guess, we just ask the people.
I like that.
So again, it was a, it was a great turnout. We had each, each board representative, actually presented themselves, kind of shared a little bit about themselves. And it gave them an opportunity also to see the boundaries. So our park superintendent was there to point out what the park was. So everybody was well aware of what is the park, what does it consist of, what are the boundaries. With that said, the sports, the sports was there to present his, he also did some recruiting for coaches. But it was a great time to kind of explain what everyone was responsible for, what they were doing in that scope of their duties. Basically with these sports, what I wanted to bring to your attention is, of course, this season has started, the fall season of sports, and that includes soccer, flag football, tennis, volleyball, and cheer. And we had over 344 registered for the sports in the fall. Also, the season started on September 8th, and it's going to go through November 3rd. The winter sports are restricted to two sports, and that's going to be basketball and cheerleading. Registration opens on October 1st through November 2nd. The ages will be five to 10 years old for basketball, and ages five to 12 for cheerleading. And of course, we can register here at, at the headquarters. Sorry, the municipal building. Move back to that Army stuff. All right. But we go back to, and also the WSR program has received over 900, I mean $9,000 in monetary donations.
Wow.
And contributions. So Andy's doing an excellent job, and that just tells you that people believe in the program if they're willing to contribute.
A lot of that, a lot of that current uniforms. And I believe Andy brought those to show us one day, they're really, really neat little uniforms.
Yes. And also we did talk a little bit about those that were trying to get on post installation, that the new command team are really looking at the force protection, so we may have to go back to getting passes to get on the installation. And we'll keep everybody informed, we'll keep everybody informed as it, as it turns, continue to go. Park superintendent's report, of course, the bathroom is complete. They're still working on the AA sink for the men's bathroom. And I say they complete, that means they're open, they're able to be used. We still have to do some grounds improvement where the sidewalks and the grass, they want to fill in those cracks so no one trips off and they can easily move equipment in and out. Also, the, just to make an announcement about the splash park, the splash park will stay open as long as the weather permits. So if it's in the 70s, pretty much it's going to stay open as per, we were told by Randy. And what will happen is, once the temperatures drop, notification will be made to the City Administrator, and we will push that information out to the community so everyone's well aware of it, so you don't plan anything, and it's not on.
That's really nice that we're doing that, because usually it was closed, you know, for the Labor Day, was closed. And here it is, 90 degrees. So that's very nice. And I think, I had some, some of the parents tell me that they really appreciate that.
Some of our old business that we, we talked about the last meeting was pretty much the preparation for this upcoming meeting. And that was the, what type of equipment we wanted to submit to the City Council that we wanted for that particular park. So we just kind of discussed that. I already told you the good news about everything there, that people were very appreciative and they was, they were surprised to have people actually asking them what they wanted. One guy, he was like, Randy, you asking what you wanted? So, I mean, but the other thing is, they did have some other issues that City Council men were there, Mr. Curtis and Mr. Liberty were there, which was outstanding. And Mr. Liberty, that's his ward. And we were able to introduce everyone and direct their questions and concerns to Mr. Liberty, so he could handle those. Some of those issues for the Summit Park were speeding. Speeding in and out, there was, in that section that leads into Summit, there is only a yield sign, but there's a lot of vehicles that speed through there, and it's right by the park, which could create some kind of catastrophe, or it could be, you know, a likely death situation there. And they, that's the same place where they drop off the kids on the buses, so it was something that.
I know. We were just talking about that at another side.
Okay. Yeah, so that was, that was their main concern. Basically, they loved it. And I will go on to the events that we have coming up. Of course, September was a busy month, September 11th, we had the remembrance ceremony, which we had quite a bit of people there that participated. But moving on to this Friday, on the 21st, the Warehouse 66 Music Host, the party in the park from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So if you're here and you're looking for something to do, go out and join them out there. On the 23rd, 30th, the 23rd and the 30th of September, and the 7th and the 14th of October, the Healthy Kids Running Series Youth Program for the Boys and Girls, pre-K through eighth grade is from 3:30 to 5:30 each day.
Who's sponsoring that?
Their name is not here, I'm not sure what organization.
Is it Frog Group?
I don't, I'm not sure.
My big.
On the 27th, the Quonix Club is hosting their annual Kids Fishing Day at the Laughlin Park. And of course, we have the Pumpkin Fest that'll take place on the 31st of October on the, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. We know people usually come early and they stay late, but those are the target time they were shooting for. Last year, we had over 2,000 people coming through there, I mean, it was packed, full of people just going in and out.
And it looked like you had more sponsors this year.
We have a lot more people that are participating this year. We had one coordination meeting, we got one more left. And we still have people committing. And everyone that is going to be a part of the 31st Pumpkin Fest did not show up to our coordination meeting because they had an obligation.
Do you have a lot of volunteers to help?
Each organization is going to provide their own volunteers.
Because I'm just saying, the Boy Scouts are really good at stuff like that.
I think we, I think we had them last year, or they came through last year. You guys came through last year, PAC 202.
Very good.
And our meeting adjourned at 6:30. The next meeting will be back in here, and depending on the weather, I guess we'll play like the splash park, it will be back at the park the next one, if this, if this weather permits.
And I would just tell you, I'm kind of chatty tonight, I apologize. But Rick Dofan, who was, is one of our newest members on the Park Board, has announced that he is moving. And so I hate to lose Rick, he was a great guy and energetic. I believe he has one more meeting with you, I believe he told me.
Yes.
And then we will be looking for new members on the Park Board. And could I also tell you that I happened to be at City Hall yesterday when the Cave State Cruisers came in with a check for $500 to donate to the park. And of course, they do that every year because we're kind of their home base, and so they always make a donation. And so hopefully that will go to something good. So thank you Cave State Cruisers. And thank you Shawn, always great job. Any questions for Shawn? Okay, thank you Shawn. Thank you park members that are here. Planning and zoning, we have, we have no business again this month, I believe this is our third month maybe that we have not met. So we did not have any business. So Mr. Clark can't talk unless he's got something to say.
I'll wait, that's what I'm saying.
But it doesn't have to do with planning and zoning?
Yes, it does.
Okay, go.
We've got two action items. For the Council to consider appointment of Trudy Dills and reappointment of Twyla Corddry to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you Alan.
You're quite welcome.
And I was going to also say, and I just told Mr. Clark this, and this is for the City Council. I moved here in 19, and my associate was none other than Irv Morris. And of course, Irv went on to be our superintendent. I accepted, it's not a resignation, but I accepted his retirement from the Planning and Zoning. Irv has been on Planning and Zoning, I believe, since I've lived here. So he, he is going to retire from that. And so we will be also looking at a new member for Planning and Zoning. I've been a very lucky mayor because I have not had much of a turnover in my boards and commissions. And that's always a good thing for a small town. So our thanks to Irv Morris. And thank you Irv for everything you've done for your city. And we do have two action items. The first one is to appoint Trudy Dills to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Her bio is there, most of you know Trudy. They are, I loved her description, didn't you? She said, "Trudy, we are retired and proudly call Waynesville our forever home." Accept a motion? A motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. I can't get the words out. One second. And do we need the roll call on that? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous. I also have a reappointment for Twyla Cordry to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I would entertain a motion? All those in favor? Approved. And again, I thank Twyla for her service also, she has been an active member. And I believe Ms. Janet is in the crowd tonight. Janet, are you there? Did you have anything you wanted to say?
I know.
Okay.
To Mr. Cora, thank you.
Very good, very good. We're glad to see you here tonight. Ms. Kreider is the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay, we'll move along to our standing committee reports. And for you Scout members, this is how we do business at the city. Anything that comes before the City Council goes to a committee first. Our first one is Roads and Grounds, and that's Councilman Clark.
Mayor, I will refer to Mr. Liberty or Mr. France, because I was not at that meeting.
Okay.
And I also don't have minutes to debate.
I was in Florida.
Mayor, do you want to do that?
Sir. I didn't find any minutes, minutes for Roads and Grounds.
Right here, oh, I didn't either.
Yeah, we didn't have roads.
Yeah, we don't have any.
Okay, Amber's bringing a copy, I suggest you.
Go to the next one?
Yeah, go to the next one, and then we'll catch back up on that one.
Very good, very good, and we'll catch up to Roads and Grounds. The next one is our utility meeting, and that of course is Councilman France. Before, before I give him the microphone, however, I have an announcement for the City Council and the city. This is our Missouri Public Utilities Magazine. And Mr. Harold nominated Mike France as the Public Official of the Year for the state, and they picked Mike.[1488.82][1488.82](Applause). And so I have some copies to give to the members, and I have two pages to give you because on the first page, their biggest award is named for Tom Tinsley, who was the City Administrator of Waynesville for many, many years. And so their biggest award they give is named for Waynesville's City Administrator. Isn't that cool? And so it's the Tom Tinsley Distinguished Service Award. And then you go to the next page, and there's our own Mike France. Mr. Harold, say some words about Mike.
Okay.
Make sure they're true.
Sure. Well, we're very proud of Mike, and of course, he's been very instrumental in the city for many years. And of course, Missouri Public Utility Life, we're concerned about our utilities, and Mike's been our utility chair for many years. And as you know, our utilities have grown, we've bought two or three other systems outside the city, and we've made multiple improvements to our utility system, you know, here. And I think that's well recognized at MPUA, and we're, we're a small city, but we're a leader in that organization. And, you know, we're kind of example for a lot of other small cities. So I think it was a very well deserved award for Mr. France.
Very good, Mike. Proud of you, proud of you. So Mike, we'll give you the microphone.
I called a meeting to order on September 11th at 3:30, and our first order of business was to review the budget for electric, water, sewer, and plant, and also natural gas. That was just our initial review of it. We'll be back with any comments that any of our departments have, or any wants and desires. Recycling grant, it has been submitted to basically provide us up to another 300 of those bins that we already passed out, and we have a list of people waiting for them. Volenger, our department updates, the Water Department's been working on, along with people from all other departments assisting, doing the Volenger Hill Project, digging in that pipeline there. Mainline intact, and there's one more, one more board to be done under an existing road as of this meeting. Utility support for commercial growth, we'd already accepted the new Taco Bell into the SIT with our vote, and so the SIT has recommended that we basically vote to approve the infrastructure that'll be, that we'll put in, and we'll be paid back through the SIT over time. And they have a very aggressive building, building going together. They said 75 days from the time they start until finished, and the weather seems to be cooperating pretty well. Sunset tank update, as of this morning, all the plumbing was in from the, for the tank, and they poured the extra foot of concrete this morning on top of their, his crew, invaluable. Electric right-of-way clearing, Mr. Sheldon stated his department has completed major right-of-way clearing this month coming off the substation down towards Mitchell, and by feeder lines A and B. Electric reliability report, Sheldon submitted, submitting with the monthly electric reliability report showing outages and monthly statistics from August. I would just tell our customer that we do have, a lot of our power lines are somewhat included with trees in that. We have been working diligently, we've spent over $80,000 on contract work, clearing those things. We've got a little bit more money, we're putting into that, plus we've been doing some in-house clearing. But we still have power outages caused by squirrels. Certain things cannot be avoided, and so, but as far as normal outages, we have kept them to a minimum with our installation of reclosers, and redoing a lot of rewiring on some of our old lines. And we're still doing some of that. And we'll be continuing to do that, replacing old wire with new. Electric conversion incentives, as you've heard, we have engaged, Waynesville, St. Robert, St. James, and Cuba have engaged attorneys in Washington DC for supporting us and working for us at the FERC, which is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Because we- Because we have been asked to undergo a major utility increase in the transportation of natural gas, which all of our communities, all those communities feel is absolutely unjust for what they're asking from us. But, in lieu of that, if the full rate increase would go through, we are looking at ways to help people save money by possibly converting them over to electric and various incentives on them doing such. And we are continuing to look at that, and we will be for the next few months. So, just bear with us, information will be out on what actually takes place. Other business, Mr. Harold presented utility committee information showing the average 2016 monthly electric bill residential, which shows Missouri's average price of $11.21, which came in under the US total of $12.56. That's per kilowatt hour, or what?
Or is that availability? Kilowatt?
I think it's 11 cents, not...
Dollars, yeah.
It's actually 11 cents, if we didn't catch that, we'll correct that, it's 11 cents.
11.21 cents versus 12.56 for the US average. And so, and our city is below the state average. Mr. Harold also stated that a couple of months ago, the city entered into a nationwide mutual aid agreement that our electric crews are on standby. We had a crew that was on standby for moving on to Florence, in fact, our city's electrical supervisor, just a day in there, he was on tab to go if we needed to send a crew. And so, we had three people that would volunteer to go along down there. There was a need for a closed session, Councilman Connelly made the motion to enter the closed session with a no vote from Mount Councilman Clark, but what you need to understand is Councilman Clark never votes for a closed session. So, anticipate that, and I break the, my vote cost. Motion passed, the meeting ended in closed session at 4:05 PM. Having no further business in the meeting, we came out at 4:20, and I adjourned the meeting at 4:21. We will meet October 2nd at 3:30 in the conference room.
Even though he did attend the closed session?
Oh, he does attend.
And can I go back and say two things? Sean, you had in your minutes that you were putting in dog, sanitary dog stations?
Yeah, training, so I put in the boot sand.
Right. You know, I've had so many people ask me about that, I guess a lot of people walk their dogs, and they don't clean them up, and they don't pack them up. And so, we're going to try, are we putting just one or two?
We're putting one on the side of the park, and we're going to put one on the offside, just to start, but just the caveat, we actually have a lot of people that are picking up, and I go to, and I tell them thank you.
Yes.
We do have some people doing the right thing, it's just a few that are...
So, I will announce that, if you don't mind it, when I do my stuff on Facebook, I just think that's a good thing for people to know that it's there, and I guess there'll be a place to throw it?
Right there.
Right there, okay. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, and nothing to announce, but today we had a meeting with the interested parties, and I believe that the city of Waynesville, Bruce, you correct me here if I'm wrong, that Waynesville-St. Robert U-Sports is going to embark on a more competitive opportunity for our kids, and again, nothing to officially announce, but...
Mayor, I think you can go ahead if you'd like.
Oh, okay, I can go ahead. We had a discussion today with Cal Ripken, Babe Ruth Baseball. And I believe that the city of Waynesville and St. Robert, along with Fort Norwood, we're going to begin offering a competitive level of baseball play for our kids. I think it's marvelous, and I know a lot of parents talk to me about that, you know, and so, be listening for that, I think it'll be a great addition to our community. It may also include kids from Lakeway, Richland will draw up our own boundary, and so, keep your eyes open for that, ears open for that, I think it's a great thing. And then on utilities, I wanted to give a little shout-out to Tracy and all the work that Tracy and City of St. Robert did when we applied for the 2016. I'll tell you something, you kids listen to this. Since we started, our focus on recycling in our two communities, we have gone from 19 tons in 2015. In 2015, we saved 19 tons from going into our landfill. Last year, we saved 50. 50 tons of stuff that didn't end up in our landfill. It's amazing. And our focus was education, information, I think once we got those bins, you know, the little blue bins that you see, it encouraged people to do it. I am so excited about it, and hopefully we'll put in for another grant, and hopefully we'll get that, and congratulations to you guys that worked on that grant, I was involved a little bit, but you guys did all the work. So proud of what we have done with recycling, and I wanted to take a moment to say that. Do we have roads and grounds?
Yes.
Did I get it?
Meeting was called to order at 4:30. Citizens comments, Keith Pritchard stated he recently spoke with the city building inspector Nathan regarding the water meter work on Hershey Drive. He requested the city take a look at it.
Where is Hershey?
Mitch McDonald stated that they would address that concern. Stolen drainage problems were noted as Hull Valley Drive, Latell Drive, Garrick Street, and there were some other issues. Proposition D was discussed about motor fuel, gas tax, and that would be a 10 cent implemented in stair steps over a four-year period. The proposed increase would add about $6 million in MODOT revenue, and funds would also go to the city and county. Update on GW Lane, Mr. Harold received an email from Camara Gregory with MODOT, stated has received a survey, will continue work on the park while it's time allowed. Other projects is on the back burner.
Wait a minute. I just thought I would sigh real loud about that response from MODOT.
Yeah.
That is terrible.
Why do they need more money?
No, no, I'm talking, well, let's talk about GW Lane. We've been working on this project for two years. It has been in our budget for two years, and for them to say that is on the back burner and not one of their priorities?
They don't have anything to do with it, just say yes, we can do it.
Yes!
That's all you got to do.
Yes, okay. I will be making a phone call tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
That's why I told everybody about it, because of the concern of how long it's going to take.
You hadn't told me that yet, I've been out of town.
Oh, is that right, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Harold.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, load drive recommendation, it was recommended overlay a load drive this year because of our new business coming into town, Taco Bell, and we welcome them. Another note is I went to the New Come and Go and had lunch there, it was very nice there. Street Department, 18 more quarters completed. There was a need for closed session, went into closed session at 4:50, and opened back up, opened session at 5:00 PM, adjourned at 5:00 PM.
I'm terrible, I spilled my water.
Gins.
I spilled my water and shit. I just happened to hit it just wrong.
Or right.
Or right. Anything else there, Clarence? I'm sorry, I'm sorry I interrupted your, I'm sorry I interrupted your presentation, I'm just very upset about GW Lane Street. And so, I promise you guys, there will be a phone call tomorrow made from the city council and mayor.
You know, it shouldn't take two-plus years to say yes or no.
And for them to say it's not a priority. I'm sorry, it is a priority, our students go to school there.
The safety issue for the kids.
Okay. So, the other thing I was going to tell you is I did just return from MML, and the lieutenant governor was there, and of course, the governor also today came out in favor of the Proposition D, which is the fuel sales tax. We have not had a raise in our fuel sales tax since 1992, and I do like the fact, thank you for taking care of me, I do like the fact that they are going to stair-step that increase, so it's not just a 10-cent whack, but the next four years, it will go up 2.5 cents each year. I will just tell you that, I think it's in your notes here, we're number 49 in funding in the United States, behind Alaska. We are in the amount of roads that we have to take care of. And so, it's really, you know, taxing taxes, that's a big situation for all of us citizens, it's something we really have to think about. But I want you all to think about this, we get what we pay for. And, you know, if you don't want good roads, you don't want good bridges, well, we're definitely not going to get them. And one of the things that has really bothered me over since I've been mayor is that there's no money for the cities anymore. And, you know, for us to do a project, it costs us a million dollars. It costs us $500,000. Whereas, in the old days, maybe it would be $20,000, you know, that would be our part, so that we could actually do some of these projects. I believe 20% of the money will go to cities, 20% will go to counties, and I believe 18% of it is going to the highway patrol. Maybe 20, actually.
Pretty good amount.
So, anyway, everybody do your homework on that, and read about it, and learn about it, and, you know, it is something that is very important to all of us.
Mayor, I got a question.
Yes.
Will any portion of that be going to MODOT?
Yes, yes, yes.
Just like you just mentioned, you get what you pay for, would that include the employment of Mrs. Gregory?
I will ask her when I call tomorrow.
Please do, because I'm going to blow the floor.
I'm sorry, kids, but we're kind of upset. We're kind of passionate about, we've worked so hard to get GW Lane Street project done. Do you kids know what we're talking about?
No.
We're third in walks at the high school area. It's been in our budget for two years. We've been waiting for permission from MODOT to do this project.
Not money.
Not money, permission, no money. But because it butts up next to I-44, they have to give permission through them and the highway, federal highway department. So, it's just bureaucracy, and it's just very frustrating. Okay, moving along. Councilman Liberty with Finance and Human Resources.
Meeting was called to order at 5:00. The bills were reviewed by myself, Councilman Curtis, and Councilman Davis. Vote was called, and we approved to pay the bills. Monthly review of account status, Harold noted that as of August 1st, we had over $3.5 million in city bank account, with $2.9 million in reserve, and over $530,000 in available money. Mr. Harold reported that as of the end of August, we should be about to sign our budget projections, and our August actual revenue is 66, and expenses are 64 percent. Mr. Harold reported to the committee on the 2019 budget review, I'll leave some things for you to tell Mr. Harold.
Very good.
Review of Community Improvement District Expansion Ordinance. I assume you're going to cover that. Potential incentive to convert natural gas to propane to electric. Mr. Harold reported municipality utility alliance has banked comparing the cost of potential incentives to convert natural gas into propane over electric, and that all has to do with what Mr. France had talked about. Early payoff alone, Mr. Harold explained current financial condition in the city, we could pay off loans and save money. The total amount for this is estimated at $43,706. Myself, Councilman Curtis, and Councilman Davis approved that to go on to the city council for their approval. Mr. Harold informed committee, Major McDonald, I can give an oversight assist to the airport, and... And Mr. Curtis, you know. Mr. Harold also reported been notified by Missouri Employers Mutual that due to our efforts and the improved safety, we have been assigned a 12, a possible 14 point. This only, only reduces the premium. Committee also reviewed proposal on E-code 360, and this will probably be included in 2019 budget.
Is that the online?
Yes, it's about the code, municipal code.
Very good.
That will be able, anybody will be able to look online to... And meeting was adjourned at 5:30 8:00 PM.
Very good. Mr. Harold, let's talk about the budget, we'll save that CID later for the economic development, okay?
Okay, well, you've got a copy of the budget in your packet, you'll get more information in the next month, and enter committees. And our plan, of course, is to give ample time to review it at each of the committee, and we'll bring it back at the October meeting, and we'll bring it back in November and ask you to approve it, probably at the November meeting. And so, it is a $20 million budget, it's a bigger budget than last year. We do have a lot of...
That's my first $20 million.
Okay. We have quite a few grant projects in it to, you know, push it to the $20 million mark. We have over $3.5 million in grants for a, for a parallel taxiway and designing a new terminal, and so, you know, that's pretty exciting, and we're putting some money, hopefully for a park next year, and we're going to do a lot of improvements, add a new bathroom, connect the trail with the downtown, and pave some of our parking lots and other things like that, so we got a lot of improvements for a park put in, a park put into the, into the plan. Of course, we've got a lot of utility improvements, we purchased two new water systems, and we got a lot of improvements planned there. Of course, we're planning on a new police car, we've also budgeted some for increasing natural gas reservation rates. Hopefully, we're still fighting that battle, we are, hopefully, we're going to stay a little bit below propane rates, which is, which is good, you know, we're anticipating that we'll be still competitive with propane, which is good. That's one of the battles, of course, we're continuing to fight. So, we'll give you more information about the budget in your committees, and you'll review it again, do you have any questions where it stands right now?
It's kind of a tight budget, because we have several things we...
We have a lot of projects we need to do, so we're usually, do have a tight budget.
But I do believe this is my first $20 million, anybody remember another one? I don't, I do not. Okay, any questions for Bruce? We have an ordinance here to pay off some lease purchases, it's ordinance 2333, counselor.
An ordinance for early payoff of lease purchase agreements for the purchase of equipment by the city of Waynesville, fixing effective date. An ordinance for early payoff of lease purchase agreements for the purchase of equipment by the city of Waynesville, fixing effective date.
I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mike, second by Clarence, and Madam clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Polkert?
Yes.
That ordinance passes, and for my scouts, the counselor, our attorney, Ralph Wayne, that's our attorney, he reads, any ordinance that we pass, by state law, has to be read twice.
If it's not posted beforehand, you have to read the whole ordinance, that's why we just read the title.
Okay, because we post them.
Right.
But he has to do that twice, I know it's kind of silly, I remember thinking, that's such a wasted thing, but that's what the state law says, it has to be read twice, so that's why he does that. that's why he does that. Okay, I see. Police committee, Councilman Conley is off on a special trip, and so I believe Jerry's going to.
I was, I was trying to hear the accent, but I didn't show up late. Clarence, I think.
Clarence is going to do it. Okay, Clarence is going to do it.
Oh, my God.
Go ahead, Clarence.
The Holy. Meeting was called. I wasn't the one in charge.
You are now.
Meeting was called to order at three thirty P.M. Uh, Councilman Conley stated that I was going to sit in for Councilman Brown, who was tardy.
Not absent, not absent.
Not absent, just late. Code book review update. Mr. Harrow stated he has contacted Mr. Muchload's office. Code book should be completed for review by mid-October. Police Department update, LLABG, local law enforcement block grant. Chief Cordova stated the department has submitted a grant for safety cones, individual officer crumb kit, two individual radar units, single radar unit and backup, cone bars, and high laptop computers and other equipment to help them do their jobs safely. Crisis intervention training, uh, Cordova stated department hosted it. Very excellent training. Uh, I think that anybody that's in emergency response should go to that and, uh, they'll better understand things. Uh, other business, new hire, Chief Cordova stated, uh, new hire was Officer Kenneth Nelson. He brings three years of experience with him, and the transition is going smooth. Uh, Mr. Harrow proposed, uh, presented a two thousand and nineteen budget to the committee. Citizens request, Mr. Harrow stated city received request from citizen to use his twenty-two rifle to shoot groundhog. You can't fire a firearm in the city limits of Waynesville. Having no further business, Chairman Conley adjourned the meeting at three forty-seven P.M.
Very good. We have, uh, and you kids may not know this, but you can't fire firearms in the city limits. And, um, we just felt like, I know groundhogs are a real nuisance, but we felt like we could not allow that. So.
Live traffic is very effective.
Yes, it is.
Very good.
And in fact, you talked to our animal control officer, give you some hints. I believe the conservation department also, you call them, and they, they try to help. Bruce, I do not have Councilman, any questions for Clarence? Okay. Uh, Bruce, I don't have Councilman Davis tonight. Would you want to?
I'll do that, sure.
Go through that real quick?
We had our, had our meeting on the, uh, August twenty-eighth. First of all.
This is the airport committee.
This is the airport committee, our joint airport board. Uh, we reviewed the budget, went over the year-to-date income. We gave a personnel update. Uh, you know, we had several new employees. We had Daniel Clark and Nick, uh, Le, Le, Lepsy were new employees. And Mitch McDonald is, uh, providing some more oversight, uh, at the airport. Uh, since then, Daniel Clark has submitted his resignation. He's going on to be a, training to be a corporate, uh, airline pilot. And we've, uh, transferred Joe McCrudden out there to help, uh, uh, fuel the airplanes. Uh, one, one important thing that we've been working on, it's, uh, our military fuel contract. And Amber and Daniel and working with, uh, Dave Robinson at the airport, and I think that's moved up the chain of command, uh, with the army. And we're starting to fuel more airplanes out there, which is, uh, helps us make ends meet at the airport. It's very good for the, for the city. Very good for our business side of the operations. In fuel cells, we did have the second highest month ever in the fuel cells, so that's good. The first higher, uh, we had one, one month earlier in the year, it was a little bit higher. Uh, we've had a few little problems with our Jet A truck. It's been down up and on. And we, we've got that. Other trucks, so we can have two out there, give us more capacity. And it's very important that we're very dependable when it comes to refueling military aircraft. Several of them are going through, uh, after you fuel, uh, train certification. I think Mitch has completed it. And I think some of the other employees have, have completed that as well. We're sending Mitch to training, uh, in Michigan, uh, later on, uh, to, uh, fuel certification training in, in Michigan. Uh, the essential air service proposals have taken in. We've had, uh, that's for the commercial service to our airport. We've had three bidders, Cape Air, Air Choice One, and Silver Airlines. And we've talked to all of them. Of course, Cape's done a good job here, but it's, it's nice to see some other people interested in our airlines. And in fact, I think we've got two airlines flying in tomorrow that are going to bring their planes and talk about their ser, uh, what they, their service that they could provide. Some, uh, some, uh, work, uh, you know, studying their proposals and seeing which one would be the best one to serve our community. We looked at different options on a fuel truck. We talked about the parallel taxiway project, which. Get going tonight. We did receive, uh, the go-ahead from the federal aviation. And award those grants. We're gonna, we're meeting with the engineer about the design of the new terminal. We're, uh, working on, of course, marketing the airport. A new marketing grant. And we're working on some holiday Barclay charter flights at the airport. They'll help the soldiers get home a little bit, uh, sooner. And we got a consultant in, involved in that. And that's the highlights of the meeting. Be glad to answer any questions.
Always busy with the air.
What, very good. When, when do you, uh, when do they bring in their planes and stuff?
One, Air Choice One's going to be in ten A.M. And, uh, Silver is going to be there. They're bringing this, uh, Saab, about, about thirty-two seater. They'll be there around one-thirty or two. So any of you that want to come out and see them, we'll invite you to come out, and, uh, you can, you know, see them and listen to their, talk about their airline.
Okay.
These, uh, fuel trucks.
Yes.
Uh, when are, is that looked at for this budget year coming up?
Uh, yes, we're going to put, uh, we're going to put some money in, uh, potentially in our budget. I think we already put some money in our budget to, uh, do a lease purchase on a fuel truck. Uh, those fuel trucks are very expensive, I know, but they are the way that we make income at the airport. And it's very important that we, especially if we get a military fueling contract, that we've got the capability to fuel the, uh, planes as they come in.
You know, uh, I was out there and with the hurricane, did you see we had, uh, military jet parked out there, uh, during the hurricane period? They came in from Cherry Point, uh, and parked out there over, uh, last weekend, day.
We're back.
Two days before.
We're back to fill that plane up about three times.
Sorry, we're being crazy.
Yep. Very nice plane.
Very good. Anything else for Bruce?
No.
We do have two ordinances tonight that are associated with our different grants, whether it's marketing or consultants. First one is twenty-three thirty-four. Counselor.
Thank you. Aviation project consultant agreement, federal assistance between City of Waynesville, City St. Robert, and Crawford Murphy and Telly Inc. fixing. The mayor to execute. Federal assistance between the City of Waynesville, City St. Robert, and Crawford Murphy and Telly Inc. fixing effective date.
I'd entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion from Mike.
Second.
Second from Mike. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Fulcher?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Frank?
Yes.
And that ordinance passes. We have ordinance twenty-three thirty-five. Counselor.
Thank you. An ordinance authorizing mayor and/or the city administrator to execute on aviation consult construction project contract, federal assistance between the City of Waynesville, City St. Robert, and Bloomsdale Excavating Company Inc. fixing effective date. An ordinance authorizing mayor and/or city administrator to execute on aviation construction project contract, federal assistance between the City of Waynesville, City St. Robert, and Bloomsdale Excavating Company Inc. fixing effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion from Mike.
Second.
Madam Clerk, roll.
Yes. Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Frank?
Yes.
Very good. That ordinance also passes.
Mayor, I did want to mention that is for the parallel taxiway. That's a three point five million dollar grant.
Right.
And awarded to.
Work at home.
Sure.
Uh, I would tell you kids, especially that it may seem. Aquatic and don't pay any attention. We've actually been discussing this stuff for a month. Many of the things that we vote on, we've been. In many weeks. And so it, it, it is just a process where we have to legally do it. And our last committee meeting is our economic development committee, and that is Councilwoman Fulcher.
Who is going to defer to Councilman Curtis since I was MIA.
Okay, we, uh, met on September fourth. I'll hit some of the highlights. The meeting was called over five o'clock. Uh, we talked about which we'll have a resolution on the extension of the CID, or, yeah, CID for the new Taco Bell area. Uh, we talked about upcoming events. We have the Veterans Day parade coming up. We also, uh, looked at the proposed budget, which we've looked at several times. We'll continue to look at it. Uh, there was a need to go into closed session. We went into closed session, came out, and the meeting was adjourned at five oh nine. Our next meeting is October second, which I won't be there. That's my anniversary.
Woo-hoo!
I should say my wife's anniversary.
[laughing]
But our next meeting will be October second at five o'clock.
Very good. Well, I have a couple of things to say here real quick about this, some of these things. First of all, I want everybody to mark down the homecoming parade, which is September twenty-eighth. You kids will get out of school at two o'clock, and you get to come down and watch the parade. The mayor has her parade car ready, but I need a driver. Want to drive me?
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, I got my driver. There you go. And then I wanted to remind everybody again that tomorrow night, there is a, uh, actually, it's rock music. In the park, six to nine, and Mr. Potts, who owns the warehouse sixty-six downtown, is sponsoring this. And he said to tell you guys that the SWAT food truck will be there, as well as the cookies lady. So all that's kind of fun stuff, I'll be there. And so hopefully, some of you will come out and enjoy some music.
That's on the stage?
At the stage, at the stage in the park. And then I have one more very important thing that I want to talk to the city council about. Uh, Mr. Wallace and I have been discussing streaming and putting our city council meetings on YouTube, on a YouTube channel. I was at the MML this week, and one of the workshops I went to, the, the first thing the man said was, if you are a city and you're not on YouTube, you have lost a whole generation of people. And I do agree with that. And so, I'm talking city council here. I just wanted to see if that was okay with you guys. I don't really think it's necessary for us to take that to a committee. Uh, what Mr. Wallace would do, Tim, you're up there, you correct me if I'm wrong, is that he would connect us to the Channel Twelve site. And he would have City of Waynesville, I believe St., uh, St. Robert's also interested in it. You would have St. Robert on one side, us on the other, and the school board in the middle, I believe he said. And then if you wanted to watch what happened at our city council meeting on a certain date, you'd click on that and you'd sit and watch it. Uh, I think, um, a lot of people don't have cable. They have DirecTV. And so even though we're on Channel Twelve, uh, it's really not available to the public. I am all about transparency, and I know you are too. One of my goals as mayor was to improve our communication with the, with the, uh, uh, community. And we have done so many things. I hope that all you adults have noticed a lot of the things that City of Waynesville has done, to try to connect you with what's going on here. So I would ask that maybe just by a show of hands, that if it's okay with you guys, I would go in and be talking to Mr. Wallace and get that started. So do you have any comments, any problems with it?
No.
Everybody? All right, Mr. Wallace, we have a date. Okay. So be looking for that. We'll be announcing that to the public when it's, uh, when it's up and running. And we'll be on YouTube. I've always wanted to be on YouTube, kids. And I can't sing, so this is.
Thank God.
This is perfect. It's perfect. It's perfect. Thank you, Cheryl, for letting me do that.
Excellent.
Yes. And then we do have, uh, an ordinance. And you kids are getting to see some interesting things tonight, uh, and you adults. I think two really interesting things. Number one is annexation, and the other thing is the CID. And so we're going to do that. And Mr. Harrow, would you discuss it, please?
Okay. This, uh, ordinance, uh, expands our community. And we do have a, it has passed the Community Improvement District, uh, uh, Board. They've, uh, they've approved it. And of course, it now is time to city council to approve it. Uh, we did talk to Taco Bell, and, uh, we offered basically, uh, there is an incentive, uh, you know, of the CID. We're going to put in a lot of utility infrastructure for the, for Taco Bell, and the CID is going to reimburse the city for that work. So I think it's a win-win. It's good for Taco Bell. The CID, uh, sales tax will, will reimburse the city for that work. And, uh, it's good for Taco Bell, good for the city, and good for the C, uh, for the Community Improvement District.
Very good. And, and again, just for the audience, a CID is a community improvement district. It's very much like Walmarts. Walmart has a CID, I believe. Uh, a lot of cities do this. You put in a CID, which allows maybe a quarter cent sales tax or a half cent. Is ours half?
Ours is a one cent. I believe Walmart's under a tenth, mayor.
Oh, a tenth, they're a tenth, okay.
Uh, probably a more involved district.
Si, similar, similar idea.
Yes.
But if you buy something at Taco Bell, it may cost you a half a cent more for each dollar. That half cent goes into a pot. And our committee, I'm on that committee, and we get extra money that we, that we can use for incentives to bring those businesses into our community, because they can then use that money to fix their parking lots, put in lights, uh, put in a wa, a retaining wall. Am I describing it well?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure things. And so it, most of us don't notice a half cent on our Taco Bell and, or at the movies. You know, the, our CID is all over that area. And so tonight, we're going to expand it.
Right.
Does that help a little bit? And Counselor, this is ordinance twenty-three thirty-six.
Thank you. An ordinance approving a petition for the expansion of Westgate Community Improvement District and directing the city clerk to notify the Missouri Department of Economic Development of the expansion of the district. An ordinance approving a petition for the expansion of Westgate Community Improvement District and directing the city clerk to notify the Missouri Department of Economic Development of the expansion of the district.
Very good. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Jerry, second by Clarence. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Grant?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fulcher?
Yes.
Thank you.
That ordinance passes. Thank you very much. That's great. And then our next piece of business is also kind of a big deal. Uh, cities are always looking to grow, and we call that annexation. And we have an ordinance tonight to annex our city limits. And that's what we're going to be discussing here. This is the property that belongs to Charles Bollinger, which we call Bell Bluff here in the local area. Mr. Harrow, do you want to add anything to that?
Uh, sure. It's, uh, it's, we're annexing in approximately a hundred ninety-three acres. We had the public hearing at our last city council, and then required to wait fourteen days to get any comments from the public. We did not receive any, uh, comments from the public. So I. See with this, uh, annexation. I think we're, uh, also going to improve the property. We're constructing a water line across there. Uh, so we're doing improvement, uh, to the water service in that area as well.
Good. This is ordinance twenty-three thirty-seven. Counselor.
Thank you. An ordinance extending limits of the City of Waynesville relating to property owned by Charles D. Bollinger in Waynesville, Missouri fixing effective date. An ordinance extending limits of the City of Waynesville relating to property owned by Charles D. Bollinger in Waynesville, Missouri.
And that is. Three acres that we will bring into the city tonight. I believe that's correct. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Cheryl was first, I believe. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fulcher?
Yes.
Thank you.
That ordinance passes. Waynesville just got larger.
Yep.
And of course, we do not have a closed session. Uh, city administrator report. Mr. Harrow, you have a lot to tell us.
Okay. Well, we reviewed, uh, we've covered a lot of it in this meeting already.
Yep, we did.
But I think we talked about the budget. Our budget is good. We're in good shape. And that's why we recommended, you know, paying off. and that's why we recommended, you know, paying off some lease purchases. If you've been up around the Sunset Tower, we poured a cement footing for the new water tower that's going in there, that's, that was completed today. We already talked about the new bathroom, I was actually, I was, although they weren't called, I was proud of our three employees that volunteered to go to the East Coast to work on that.
Very good.
I guess it was not quite as severe as, as anticipated, but I still appreciate the, Daniel and his crew volunteering to go there, and they did, they did some work to kind of get prepared for that. Already talking to the air services bids, and hope some of you can come out tomorrow and see the different airplanes as they, as they fly in, of course, to support Taco Bell, and also to support the new Come and Go, which did open today as scheduled, and they were very busy up there, but traffic was flowing pretty good, and my experience, except the bus, a left, or, left back onto the road, you need to avoid the bus traffic to make a left out of there, that's what I, one thing I did discover. We're looking forward to the Babe Ruth program, we think that will enhance our baseball program We did do, we fixed the natural gas, I believe that that, we'll have to double check, yeah, we'll check it tomorrow, make sure everything's good, then we can reopen it. One thing that I would like to see if we could coordinate, MQA conference, when police and roads and grounds committees are scheduled to meet, I believe that's October third, I think myself, Mike, of course, he's gonna receive his award, and Mitch will be there, and we're asking to move those meetings back to October eleventh, the next week at the same time.
Okay.
So I'd like to get your approval or consensus to go ahead and do that, is that agreeable with the, okay, we'll send out a notification, notification of that. Work on, mitigation projects there, we removed a lot of gravel around Dyer Street, we did some work around the old Highway H bridge too, so be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Busy times.
Do you have any information on, for, stuff on the Silver Airlines?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
I'd like to read it.
Sure.
Before I come out tomorrow.
Sure.
And I've got a, have you got a copy, I got that little packet.
Yeah, we've got some, we'll give you...
So, we're finishing up here, guys, we always give our council the opportunity to have the last word, and before I call on Councilwoman Cheryl Fulkert, everybody, we won't sing, but everybody let's say happy birthday to Cheryl. Happy birthday, Cheryl!
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I really don't have a whole heck of a lot to say, I know that we had a great turnout for the September eleventh event, and I just want to say, you know, of course, be careful for watching out for the kids in school buses.
Very good, thank you. Alan?
Congratulations to Tiger football team Friday night on their end.
Go Tigers!
Everybody get out there and support the kids and the athletic programs, because those aren't the only entertainment venues we have here in Waynesville, some cities for the adults have Ben &amp; Jerry's, other municipalities have Chuck E. Cheese, we, in our community, every Monday and Thursday at nine o'clock down at the courthouse, we get roots and booze, so if you need some entertainment, go down and visit one of the commissioner meetings.
Okay, thank you, Alan.
You're welcome.
I, 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 Mike?
Moving on. In the last few months, I've come to the understanding that government does work, and change happens only when people get involved. With the Dixon thing, I think I've mentioned that government works when people voice their opinions, and every meeting that we have, people have the opportunity, or here at the council and our subcommittees, they're open to the public. I would recommend that, maybe you don't watch everything on Facebook, but that you get involved with your government. I've had a lot of people ask me, how do I change things? You show up with a group of people, like-minded people, and we listen, that's our job as your representative, is to listen to you, so get involved with your government if you want change.
Very good, Mike, I like that. Jerry?
I'd like to remind everyone that the twentieth anniversary of the Southern Gospel Reunion.
Oh, yes.
Will be in Waynesville Friday and Saturday night, encourage everyone to try to attend.
Very good, always a big event, brings hundreds of people into the community.
I'd like to echo Mr. Curtis's comment, and I thank each and every one of you for being here tonight, and I would like to commend the park board, they did an excellent job up at Summit Pass. People were involved. That's right, and I would like to commend Mr. Harold and his staff and the different departments for all the work they're putting forward to make the budget work through.
Very good, and Mike?
I would tell you, I'm extremely humbled, and I really appreciate the city putting forth my name for that honor. I would like to thank Bruce and Mitch for their mentoring while I've been in this position, my fellow committee members, and my fellow councilmen for authorizing the funding it takes to do all these projects we've been able to do. But most of all, I really need to thank all our employees from the utility departments and the roads and grounds, because they all work, and they, they, like when we put in the bridge, we had help from everybody doing that, to include some of our office people down there, so it really takes the entire city to make utilities for this community work to the degree they are, and I would tell you that they have done nothing but improve year after year after year.
Amen.
Thank you all very much.
That's, that's very much true. One of the things I'm proud of, from being mayor, is how much work we have done, and how many improvements, and I will end on just a good note, because we all need good news, and as all of you know, if you stay on social media, go on social media, we have a little girl here in Waynesville, her name is Taylor Duncan, Taylor is five years old, and she is learning about Missouri history, and she came up with the idea of having ice cream with all the mayors in Missouri, and there's nine hundred mayors in Missouri, so chances are she probably is not gonna make nine hundred, I shouldn't say that, because knowing this little girl, she may very well. She now has had ice cream with a hundred and three mayors, because this week she showed up at our Missouri Municipal League meeting in Branson, and we had a mayor's meeting, and there were seventy-three of us in there, and all of us had ice creams with Taylor, is that cool? The next day, she went to Jefferson City and had ice cream with the governor, so her now, her count, her count now is mayors one oh-three, governors one. I just think it's just darn cool, and you can go to Show Me Ice Cream and follow the story of little Taylor Duncan, I believe she met three mayors today, so very, very proud of the Duncan family, they are a young military family, very, very proud of my neighbors, very proud of them. Guys, we appreciate you being here tonight, I'd like, if the staff would go ahead and exit, if you want to go home, I can lock the building if you need me to, Bruce, or if you want to stay, but I'm going to have a little chat with the Boy Scouts and, and their parents, and so if any of the, the council would like to stay, you may do that. But this meeting is now adjourned, and if you need to leave, please do that.